We're ready.
All right.
You betcha.
If we could all stand for the pledge of allegiance, we'd appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
If you'd call the roll, please. Councilmember Schroeder?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Mayor McKay?
Here.
We have a forum. All right. Quasi judicial, do I hand it over to Jeff? You got a rule, you need the rules of evidence. Dee?
Sure.
I'll throw out in a second. Thank you, Mayor, sorry.
Yeah, it's all right.
Left my agenda in the car and I don't want to grab it right now. The following items on the agenda are deemed to be quasi judicial in nature. We actually have two other items dealing with garages that the applicants have waived quasi judicial procedure on. But all of the items relating to quasi judicial, the rules of procedure are contained specifically within the code and the agenda. I'm not going to read it out into the record unless everyone or anyone in the audience wishes me to. But we will follow the strict rules of evidence and you will have to find by competent substantial evidence, by unanimous vote of council, that the item before you meets the applicable provisions of the code. If not, such item will be denied. At this point in time, if there's no objection to not reading all the quasi rules or the waiver of quasi judicial procedure, I will go ahead and ask Russell to swear anyone in who wishes to speak on any of those items we're going to be considering tonight.
If you're going to give testimony, could you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Russell, would you please read item three into the agenda?
Sure. Certainly. This is a site plan amendment for Coquina Plaza. This is a resolution and final order of the Town Council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving application number SP 66-18 by Coquina Station LLC, which is the owner, and Electrify America LLC, the leaseholder, to amend the Coquina Plaza site plan to add an electric vehicle charging station, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? If you could please state your name for the record that you've been sworn in and that you understand the proceeding, then I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Cadem's and then back to you.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Amy Green and I am a site acquisition manager for Black &amp; Veet Corporation here representing Electrify America. Their address is 2003 Edmund Holly Drive, Reston, Virginia.
And you've been sworn in?
Yes.
And you understand the proceeding?
Yes, I understand.
Just for the record, do you stipulate and agree to the staff report and the conditions contained therein?
Yet. Is, I haven't seen the staff report.
Okay, there were two conditions of approval. We'll get to that shortly.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to Jeff and then I'll ask him.
Come back.
And I apologize, I thought you would have gotten that.
Okay.
Jeff?
Okay, thank you.
State your name that you've been sworn in also.
You can sit down for now if you like.
Jeff Cadem's, Town Planner, 3350 Northwest 53rd Avenue, Suite 101 in Fort Lauderdale. This is an application for a charging station, a vehicle charging station at Coquina Plaza. These types of, in our electric car age, you know, we're starting to see more and more of these things and the facilities are getting bigger and bigger. This would be the first for Southwest Ranches. The portion of the property that they're proposing to install this at is the southwest corner of the Publix parking lot, pretty much along the property line with Bank of America, a shared property line. It's a logical location because it's the furthest away from all the stores and won't inconvenience folks who are not looking to charge their vehicles. There'd be four dispensers, so four cars could be charged simultaneously. The equipment consists of some utility cabinets in the landscape island, which is being expanded to accommodate them and also add, offset the equipment area with more landscaping. And then two sets of dispensers inside the parking lot. In order to expand the landscape island and to accommodate the equipment in between the parking spaces, they're going to be restriping some of the spaces in that area for a net loss of three spaces. The center has sufficient parking now, well above the three spaces that they're proposing to remove and even the four that would be for electric vehicles. They have over eighty parking spaces surplus with their current tenant mix. So, in conclusion, we find that the application as proposed satisfies our code requirements. We recommend approval with two conditions. One is that prior to issuance of any engineering or building permit, they submit a tree removal application for a single tree that's going to have to be removed and mitigated. And we've already discussed what and where with the applicant and they're prepared to do that. And the second is the applicant shall be responsible for all cost recovery expenses incurred in the processing of this application.
Thank you. Now that the applicant has heard the conditions, do you accept the conditions as stated?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Does anyone in the council have any questions of staff at this time? Seeing none, I'm going to turn it over to the applicant for a presentation. Does the applicant have anything to add to the presentation?
No.
Okay, does anyone in the town council have any questions of the applicant?
No.
I do.
Actually, I do.
So, just from a, once it's installed and moving on standpoint, if there's damage to that or there's any issue vandalism or things like that, how is that handled?
Electrify America is responsible for repair, maintenance of the whole site, landscaping, everything.
Okay.
So, it falls on Electrify America.
And who would be contacting them?
My, I don't know quite yet. I do have a contact here, but I don't know if he's going to be the one. That would be an operations person, but I can certainly get that name and number.
I mean, I just think something, if there's not somebody there that's designated to kind of, a property manager or something like that to watch over it, then, I mean, it needs to be a sticker or something. So, it doesn't become an eyesore that sits there for, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah. Well, the property manager of the shopping center has contacts at Electrify America because they have a lease agreement with them. So, they have those names. They can call directly.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Through a code enforcement perspective, we would cite the property owner.
I know, I just, you know, I don't want it to be an eyesore.
Of course.
It's great when it's brand spanking new and everything's good, but...
I have a question and this is more curiosity. What's the average charge time?
An hour. And that is if you are using the 50 KW, which is the, what we're installing here, a charger, from zero to full, about an hour. And it's supposed to get you 200 miles.
Wonder who has a hot dog stand next to it.
Is there a charge for that or is that just?
There's a charge.
There's a charge.
Okay.
It's time based, per kilowatt, by minute.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Seeing none, we're going to open it up to public comment. Before I open it to the public in accordance with the Jennings Rule, does any council member have any disclosures to make on this item?
Not I.
None.
Okay, seeing none, we'll open it up to the public. Does any member of the public wish to speak about this item? Seeing none, public session closed. Jeff, do you have any concluding comments?
No concluding comments.
Applicant have any concluding comments? Mayor, over to you for deliberation.
All right. Any additional questions or comments?
Make a motion to approve.
Awesome.
Should I come? Say it.
All right. Steve made the motion and Freddie seconded it. Call the question. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes. You're good? You can leave.
Or you can stick around if you like.
Mayor, we only have one card for public comment. David Kozinski, the rules are in the agenda. David?
Good evening, Council. David Kozinski, 6411 Holliday Trail. Speak in behalf of the Sunshine Ranches Homeowner Association that two days ago, I received an email from former vice president and current board member Sandra Farah that her father too had passed away. So, I'd like to just keep Sandra and her family in your thoughts. And thank you, Councilmember Schroeder, for your comments regarding my father. I really, really, really thank you so much. All right, good night.
Thank you. Mayor, I'm to item three.
Item five.
Sorry. Board report.
I have a question. Don't we have to close the other meeting and open it, do a new pledge?
No.
We don't? Okay.
Board reports.
And any board reports? Seeing no board reports? All right.
Councilmember?
Councilmember comments. Who'd like to go first? No comment? Steve?
I just, just one quick comment. As you, just to make sure everybody's aware, we are in the budget season and we had a meeting this past Tuesday to go over the initial budget and the funding. And it's, 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 it's kind of a tough year because contracts have gone up and expenses have gone up. So, I'm just encouraging residents to please look online, budget's there. Take a look at it, provide your feedback. We welcome any feedback that you'll be able to provide. Thank you.
Go ahead. Dee? You want to go? Sorry.
I too would like to reiterate what Steve said. It is online. There's always something that maybe we missed that you might catch where it could help us a lot. So, please take and take the time to look it over. My condolences to the vice chair from Sunshine Ranches. It's a tough pill to have to swallow when you lose a parent. And, you know, I think I speak for everybody. Our condolences goes out to anybody in that case. And that's all I have to say this time.
Okay, Dave. Gary?
Yeah, I got a few things to go over. First, let me get out some announcements. The eighth of September, we have hazmat in the park from eight AM to 2 PM. And this coming October, and, you know, can't believe we're already talking about October, we have the Country Roads Craft Fair at the Equestrian Park on the 20th. So, I just wanted to mention that and I'll be mentioning that as we draw closer. And also, the hazmat is at the barn in Rolling Oaks. So, it's a drive-through situation, quick in, quick out. It's really set up well. So, I just want everybody to take advantage of it. Excuse me, two things I'd like to talk about, Mayor, and usually I'm short and brief and this isn't going to be one of those times.
Go right ahead.
So, if everybody will please bear with me. The first thing, there was a meeting last Tuesday with the town administration, the legal department, and Broward County, their version of FDOT, I guess you call it BDOT. And Richard Tornice was there regarding the horse crossing out west and the results of that workshop. And I've asked Andy to mention, to bring everything up. Since he was at the meeting, I was unable to attend. And he's going to cover that in administrative comments or Keith will cover some segments of it in legal comments. So, I wanted to tell you that that's going to be forthcoming now, the results of that.
In the future, if you can't make it, just give me a buzz. I'll try to make it. We both couldn't be there and stuff like that.
Yeah, I had to work.
You were just out of surgery.
Oh.
Yeah. There was some extenuating circumstances in your case.
You should have called Keith, uh, Steve.
Sorry?
You should have called Steve.
Should have called Steve.
Got it.
You can call me anytime, Gary.
Absolutely.
You just can't talk about anything.
Understood. The second thing I want to talk about, okay, I'm going to do the top of the line and I'm going to give you a preamble and then a discussion from there.
Okay.
Okay. It deals with fill, illegal fill. Okay? Let me give you the setup so that everybody understands where this is going. Some neighbors of mine, who shall remain nameless, asked me to take a drive down their street and look at some properties that were bringing in fill. Couple days later, I took a drive down the street and there was a property, I don't want to get into where it's at and who done it and all that other stuff, but there was a property that brought in a great deal of fill and built up a berm that exactly bisected the property. And it just rained and you could see a flood on one side and dry on the other side. And it was clearly blocking flow, running into the neighbor's yard, all that. So, at the behest of the neighbors and all that, I contacted Andy. And Andy, if I've got this wrong anywhere, jump in, feel free to jump in. Contacted Andy about it. Andy sent out code enforcement. He was cited for illegal fill. And then the process from that moved forward. About two weeks later, and I may have the timeframe shaky, but a little bit later than that, I go by and now there's a fence on top of the fill. A very high fence on top of the, privacy fence on top of the fill. And my first reaction to the previous two weeks for the fill was to remove the fill. We've all talked about that, like, you know, till we're blue in the face for 16 years.
Right.
That we can't go any further until the person removes fill. Well, guess what? We can't enforce that. Because that's what I had asked Andy to do, was to get, to have them remove the fill. We cannot enforce that. We've talked about it till we're blue in the face, but it turned the reality of it.
Nobody's ever told us we couldn't enforce that.
Yeah. Well, where there's nothing on the books, this is where I'm going with it. There's nothing on the books that says that we can enforce it. So, the person went through the permitting process, got permitted for the fill and then the fence popped up and then got cited for the fence.
No permit for the fill or the fence.
Right. And then got cited for the fence later. I mean, this was like blatant disregard of everything you could ever dream of. And so, then they went back and reapplied for the fence and they didn't have to remove the fence or anything like that. So, there was no penalty. It was just a nuisance. They had to come to Town Hall, do that, do this, do that, do that. South Broward Drainage apparently wasn't concerned with it. It's from a drainage. I think Rod looked at it and they figured out a couple little minor adjustments here and there to try to make it all work. But I'm trying to summarize now is bottom, and bottom line was basically the resident just completely ignored the process, knew they were in error and just went forward anyway because there was no penalty. There was absolutely nothing to stop them, no, you know, other than being under violation and then coming into compliance. That's the purpose of code, is to get everybody into compliance. But the property owner was just compounding the problem by just going into a further mode by putting a fence on top of the, on top of the berm. And it was a high berm. I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't a small, small thing. I mean, it was like, whoa, kind of deal. Not quite like the one that was on Dyke's Road many years ago where it was like 4,000 truckloads or whatever that was determined. But it was, it was very noticeable in the neighborhood. What I'd like to do, and I'm opening up for discussion because I'd like to hear all your thoughts on it. Administration, code, and legal have come up with an idea that we could write an ordinance. Obviously, the crafting the ordinance would be a lot of give and take on all of us as to what we would like to see in it, that would be able, for code, to instantaneously find the person that did, that is doing it incorrectly. I like the idea. We can set any kind of dollar value that we want or any kind of...
It ought to be high.
Yeah. Well, that's the discussion part that we may have down the road. A dollar value or a, where they have to remove it before they put it in. Otherwise, it's just the cost of doing business, you know, that sort of thing. And we've all, we've all been talking about this since, you know, 2000 and we...
I thought we had a fit.
Yeah. And I was kind of flabbergasted throughout the whole ordeal that there was nothing we could do to reverse it.
That's crazy.
Yeah. But, you know, it is what it is. I mean, we've got to, we've got to put in the legislation to correct that, I think. So, and I'm not talking about somebody that brings in a pickup truck of dirt to make a raised vegetable garden.
There's level one, level two, level three.
Right. But I'm not talking about something like that. Or you're springing in sand to spread around where your horse is, you know, that sort of thing. We're talking about somebody that's just, a property owner that just blatantly disregards all the rules, doesn't care if they flood their neighbors, doesn't care, anything like that. So, I'd like everybody to think about that. I want to, I would like to, I'm asking all of you for your permission to ask Andy and Keith to draft an ordinance to start working on that that would actually put some teeth into our town codes regarding fill, fences, things of that nature. And I'd like to hear your thoughts.
Can I join in yet or?
Absolutely. No, I can hold.
Okay.
I'd love to hear everybody's.
If we can't, if we don't have the ability to enforce the removal part, I mean, that's what I, I was under the impression when we had set that up that when they brought in the fill illegally, part of the penalty in fine was the cost of them having to have it removed, you know, before they could bring it back with a permit. And if that's not the case, I would tell you we go into the mode of, if it's a level three permit, it's a $5,000 fine. Because if you don't hit them, the double permit fees are slap on the wrist. That's nothing. So, I would tell you the level two permit is 2,500 bucks. At a level three permit, it's $5,000. A level one permit, you know, it's not really anything because there's no fee related to a level one permit.
Yeah, so we had, we had talked a while back about the penalties if you don't pull a permit. And I, my understanding is that there are specific limits based from that previous conversation. So, we had talked about, okay, you double it the second time, then you triple it and you quadruple it. Keith, can you?
Yeah, I can answer that. What you're referring to properly, Councilmember Bright Cruz, is dealing with permit fees. That the maximum under the Florida Building Code that you can charge someone is double permit fees.
Okay.
The Florida statutes has a provision that deals with code enforcement that says that if someone does something on their property that creates an irreparable harm to the surrounding community, that the municipality may assess up to $5,000 for that one-time irreparable harm. We do that often when it comes to house parties. If they don't get a permit, often we come before the magistrate and ask for a one-time $5,000 fine, especially if our PD is dispensed to break up the party, which, which happens once in a while. So, what is being asked here is unfortunately, while you just can't go there and issue them a ticket for $5,000 because the law requires them to have the ability to have some due process and to be heard, the law also allows us to draft an ordinance to say, a finding of the town council, as the mayor just brought up, that level three is deemed so egregious that it destroys surrounding neighborhoods and as a result, we believe it to cause irreparable harm. Level two is, you know, also harmful, but less harmful. So, you know, that's how we could draft the ordinance. And in doing so, when Robert brings it forward, it's not just a notice and an opportunity to cure, it's actually a notice of the violation seeking 2,500 or $5,000 fine.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so, to summarize, I think, like I said, I was totally flabbergasted that we couldn't do virtually anything and...
That's crazy.
And I'm, and I'm like, you know, the proverbial emperor has no clothes and, you know, like, what are we, are we kidding ourselves up here? We're not, you know, so how can we do this? And that was, I think it was last meeting and the meeting before last where I mentioned that Andy took all the air out of my balloons. Well, he put, he put the air back in one of them. It was a lot of work. There's more coming, but this is, this is one of them. And, you know, I think we should move in that direction where we draft an ordinance. It includes clearing, fill, you know, the outdoor stuff that's egregious. It's something that's egregious that, that we can find somebody and it sticks. And we can make a condition of removal.
Right.
Or an undoing of the process as a precondition to even moving forward. And...
That'd be even better.
I don't, Keith, can we do that? We're...
Can we not only find them, but make them remove it and then get a permit to bring it back?
The removal wouldn't be a code enforcement situation. That would be part of the building permit process. So, if, you know, it's possible, but you're in a situation that where someone would remove it for a second and then dump it back down. I don't know if that's as good as...
No, no, we weren't talking, I don't think we were talking in lieu of the fine. I think we were talking along, in addition to the fine, make them remove the fill they brought in and then have to get a permit to bring it back.
I got to look at it. It's generally one or the other.
Okay, well, then if that's the case, go with the $5,000 fine.
Yeah. You know, in other words, I'd like to see an ordinance drafted. And we can kick this football around all day up here once it gets drafted.
I want to get it fixed so we have teeth in our tool.
Right, exactly.
I mean, if it were for you just learning this, this could have gone on for quite a while and we don't, no, we don't have any teeth.
Yeah. And, and, like, you know, shock doesn't even begin to describe, you know, and we, like I said, and I don't mean to repeat myself, but we have talked about it ad nauseam up here and in the drainage committee, in the comp board and all the other committees.
And nobody ever told us that it...
Nobody ever told us that we couldn't, we couldn't do it.
Yeah. And so, I'd like to, I'd like to ask the administration and legal to move forward with...
You guys on board with that?
Putting that, something like that together.
Yeah, he's on.
I'm on board with it. I do have one question. I agree with where you're going. I agree with the intent. I do have a question, though. What, if somebody were to bring in illegal fill and put it on their property exactly to code, they just didn't get the permit?
One, two, or three?
Three. Big, major thing. But they do it right.
Not getting a permit is not doing it right.
Let me reword.
Okay.
They, they put the fill on the property according to code. That part is right. They do not get the permit. That part is wrong. Would they fall under this category?
Technically, yeah.
Yes.
Because how would they know if you did it right? If it wasn't surveyed, permitted in the drainage areas? How would you know?
I'm just, I'm just asking the question. I'm not...
No, no, I know, but I'm saying how would you know if you didn't go forward with? Level three is a huge amount of dirt.
I know it, I know.
Yeah. So, worst, that's the worst-case scenario. So, how do, how would we know that they didn't impact the drainage of their neighbors and fill in their drain areas without a permitting process?
Obviously, if it's never brought to our attention, we would never know.
Right.
But somebody brings it to our attention, right? We go out there. We recognize there was no permit for it. They have to get a permit. And at that point, it has to be inspected. Inspector goes out there and you know what? They did it, they did it right.
But you have trucks coming in dumping dirt and you got a machine leveling it off.
I'm not, I'm not defending it. I'm asking a question.
No, no, I get, I get, it's a good question. It's a, it's a great question, actually.
But I don't, I guess what I'm saying is, as Gary was saying, that without a plan that they're working off of, you're implying that they just, they have a plan, they're moving forward, but if they have a plan, obviously they're going to build or do something. You know you got to get permits to build. How did they happen to miss getting a fill permit?
They didn't happen to miss it.
Okay.
They chose not to do it.
Yeah.
Don't get me wrong. I'm not, I'm not saying that...
$5,000.
Yeah, okay, now, a permit, a level three permit also requires elevations, if I remember correctly. I mean, that's...
Yeah, you're right.
That's pretty substantial.
That's where I was going.
You've got to, you've got to have the before, you've got to have the after.
You don't have the before.
Right.
How are you going to know what the elevations were?
Right. I think if we're really, really going to do something about the egregious, you know, fill levels that come into our town on properties, we need to move in this direction. If not, I think we're kidding ourselves.
Yep. Agreed. I agree with you. I agree with you. I just, I just, I just don't want a knee-jerk reaction. I just, I just don't want a knee-jerk reaction.
Right.
I want to be able to think it through and make sure that we're not, we're not missing something.
Right, that's why I wanted to come back, come back for multiple discussions.
We were in the impression we had to fix by making them remove it, now we learned, here we are, that we can't make them remove it. Well, I would have never dreamt in a thousand years that we couldn't make them remove it. That's just beyond.
Well, my, well, my thoughts are that this goes through the process.
Yeah.
Where Andy and Keith draft this, and Russell.
Yeah.
They draft this, they put it up individually for us for discussion, or, and then we collectively scratch our heads and figure out what we don't want and what we want, and what they're suggesting, and what Keith tells us. You know, I mean, this might take, you know, several meeting process.
Yeah.
Over several months.
Let's get it done.
Yeah, you know, I don't, I don't see this happening.
Yeah, I don't want to drag our feet on this. I'd like them to work diligently and bring it forward and get it to us.
I agree.
Everybody in favor?
Yes.
Okay, he took away the rest of my marbles, so we'll have to wait for the next meeting. That was all I had.
It can't be done.
You guys, you guys agreed to it. I didn't expect anybody to go okay with it.
Freddie?
I'm good.
You're good? Okay. I don't really have anything other than everybody knows we have an election coming up. We have one seat open, and it's going to be Steve's seat. We have two residents running, and it's Bob Hartman and John Eastman. Bob happens to be present. I don't see John here, but anyhow, so do your homework. And then the other thing was, we have two charter changes on the ballot for, to 5-0 vote. Do your homework on that. One of them is a, a change from a supermajority of four out of five to 5-0, and the other one is a three to two vote, changing it to 5-0. So I would tell you, me personally, I'm not in support of either one. I would vote no on them. I have colleagues up here that would tell you to vote yes on them, but it's a matter of opinion. Do your homework. Just giving everybody a heads up on that. Next week is early voting, or whatever voting is, so those are the voting stuff that's coming. It'll be in this primaries is next week, so in, in this room. So those of you that are coming out, it'll be right here in this room. So, and anybody came for DMV today, we apologize, we had a code special hearing in this room. They had to set up elsewhere, and I heard it was like a two-hour wait today. That's the longest I've ever heard of. So anyhow, I apologize to any of you that had to came out, come out and wait. But other than that, I'm good. Legal, you're up to bat.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going through my mind to make sure I cover everything that Andy would want to cover. To, a couple of quick issues. We are still in discussions with the OIG, Office of Inspector General, concerning overbillings by our prior waste vendor. They've issued preliminary information to the town, which we had to accept via confidentiality agreement with their department. But what I can tell you is we're diligently working with the waste vendor to resolve the open issues. And in actuality, kudos to Andy and Marty for withholding so much money from the waste vendor's final payment, that we're actually going to have to issue them a check at the end because we've over withheld, which is a good thing.
Better.
Yeah, which is a very good thing. Of course, we won't end up getting credit from that in any report, but at least you all know the reality of what transpired, and our taxpayers were very well protected in this one. I'll touch on it real quickly, because I was there, but I'm sure Andy can elaborate. We did have a wonderful meeting with Broward County Transit and Highway Engineering, and truly want to thank Richard Tornese and his wonderful team, because every time Andy, myself, or Rod needs anything, they really are, are willing to help. In this case, we met specifically concerning the equine tragedy that occurred, the double equine tragedy, and two individuals were injured as well, for crossing Griffin Road at the designated cross. And that's what I personally was harping on from a legal standard, standpoint, is these horses and riders crossed the road at the designated opening. There's, I think, four or five designated openings along Griffin Road, and they actually crossed at that opening. But according to the state attorney, they could not ticket those, the driver, who was clearly at fault for not keeping his eyes on the roadway, because the state attorney's office claims, from what I'm being told and reading the police report, that because the crossing was not marked, the driver could not be held at fault, despite the fact that our mayor took wonderful photos of the accident happening at the exact place where it says horse crossing. So, you know, clearly, there needed to be more done to not only be able to protect our residents and riders, whether they're from town or otherwise, but also to be able to inform motorists that these are designated crossings, so they would not happen again. Andy and Rod threw out a lot of different options and ideas, and I threw out, you know, ones that made no sense, but I threw them out anyway. And at the end of the, the day, it looks favorable, not guaranteed yet, but looks favorable, that the county has agreed within its budget to process flashing signs, solar, at the designated Griffin Road openings, so that motorists will be able to see it at all hours of the day through flashing, you know, lights around the signage, which the county says does help. So I did grill them on that as well. In addition, the county has agreed at its cost to place more horse crossing signs around Griffin Road, because there's apparently no, and Andy can correct me or Rod, no approach sign to those crossings. So you actually don't know the crossings there until you're up to it, because there's no sign that says horse crossing, you know, coming up, or something like that. So I commend Andy and Rod on an excellent meeting, and I, I think that the town is going to end up in a very good position with improvements made to those crossings as well. Andy and Rod did speak with them about other things as well. I'll let Andy touch on those, because he did them right before I got in the room on purpose. So, in, in final news, CCA, we had a, a hearing this week because Pines attempted to block the deposition of Ryan Greenberg and the Florida Immigrant Coalition. And the judge, in about two seconds, and the first time I've ever seen this judge rule on the bench in this case, from the bench, she said, no, issue the subpoena, they're going forward. So I was pleased to see that we're still progressing, and again, CCA is taking the lead in those, so it's not a major financial expenditure to the town. Other than that, no further legal comment. Turn it over to Andy.
You're up, Andy.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Just to, just to continue on with the meeting with the county, it was, it was a very good meeting. I will tell you that they were very receptive to increasing the signage for those, the areas where the equestrians do cross. It's my expectation that they should have some signs up certainly within the next two to three months. The flashers, they indicated would take a little bit longer, could take up to six months. But I felt very confident leaving the meeting that, that, that those things would move forward. We also talked, touched on, before Keith walked in, we touched on and spoke with them about several other things. We talked about traffic light synchronization. We had a complaint from a resident about the backup at Dyke, so we covered that. Other residents, Mike Hanley has brought up the intersection at, you know, coming out of, out of Weston on Weston Road to go right on, on Griffin. We talked about that, so they're going to take a look at that. So we, we covered a, a number of issues. It was a very good, very productive meeting, and I'm hopeful that we'll see something. The only thing, I do want to correct Keith, because when he was talking about the horse crossings, he kept saying the crossing. And there, there really isn't a, a crossing, although it's an area where the equestrians cross, and we want to call attention to it, it isn't like a pedestrian crossing, like you would have, like at an intersection. And so they're not, they're not going to restripe to, to do that, but they are going to work with us with, from a signage standpoint, to call more attention to that. So hopefully, we'll never have a problem like that again.
So, Andy, if I can just interrupt. So there was, there was one bit of bad news from that meeting.
In, in that, it's not.
So, so from the, from that, we had previously heard that we expected that on 190th, that a left turn lane would be put in there, and then that was in the works and was going to be, needed, needed some follow-up, needed some final approvals, but that it looked like it was good, and it was going to be going ahead. In this meeting, it was brought forth that that is not going forward. So I've been speaking with Andy, and we dug out some old emails that were alluding to the fact that it would be going ahead, and we are going to continue the conversation and see if we can get that turned around. Really, the next step that they were going to do was to confirm that it needed to be done once school started and the traffic picked up again. So they, they should be doing a study right now, which is, to the best of my knowledge, is not happening. And so we need to continue the conversation, see if we can get them out there to do that study, and, and see if we can get that back on the rails again. The other thing that is there that I brought up last time we talked about it, is there's, there's a danger there, because that's where the road goes from two lanes in each direction down to one lane in each direction. And if you live out there, you know that it's not unusual to have a little, a little race going on there, to see who is going to be first in line coming out of when those two lanes go into one. And then it's immediately after that, that you have to make the left-hand turn onto 190th. So it's kind of one of those things, speed up and then slow down. So I think it is a danger. I think the traffic, all the other roads that are even further west, that have virtually the same traffic, or probably less, they had the traffic count to require a left turn lane. So I don't understand the logic here, but we're going to pursue it.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember. As far as that tra, that turns, uh, turn lane, I'm sorry, at Southwest 190th, we were under the impression, as you were obviously, that that project was moving forward. When we met with them this week, they indicated that it wasn't warranted based on the traffic counts. We've asked them for the data. So I want to see what, you know, what the counts were when it was done, and the timing, the timing may very well have been a problem. So we're going to take a look at that.
We need to proceed with that, that study that they promised.
Correct, correct, yes. On the fill discussion that came up before, I want to thank Councilmember Jablonsky for bringing that up. I know I unfortunately took some wind out of your sails because I wanted to work through it. And I want to thank the mayor as well, because he actually brought that issue, you both brought that, that issue to me in the same week. So we've been working on it. I, I met with staff, I had a, what I thought was a wonderful solution. I spoke with Keith when he got back from vacation, and Keith very promptly said, no, you can't do that. So, okay, what can we do? So we went, we went back and forth, and I think we have a, a solution that'll work. He and I will tweak that, and we'll put some language together to bring back to, to you guys to, to work through. So I just wanted to touch base on that. I got an email earlier today from Bertha Henry from the county. As you know, Broward County is putting that one cent surtax back on the ballot again in November.
Good luck.
It, it looks like they're reaching out insufficiently, I believe, to the municipalities. They're looking for support, and it looks like they'll be asking us to approve an interlocal agreement in September in order for us to get a share of that, similar to like state sales tax or gas tax numbers. It, it appears the county is only willing to share 10% of their revenues with the municipalities. The municipalities are not, are not thrilled with that. I, I don't think there's room for horse trading there now, but I will, reviewing what I got from the county, it may come down to, we approve the agreement, or we don't, we get our 10%, or we don't. I, I don't believe that there's going to be any room to negotiate there, but we'll go, obviously, we'll go through that and bring it, the data, and, and a recommendation to council, one of the September meetings, so that we can consider that if it's beneficial to the town. So we'll look at that. Just want to congratulate Marty for a good meeting the other day on the budget, and an outstanding job from the finance department. And just tagging on to that, I just want to give you a FEMA update, now Hurricane Irma. The total cost to clean up the town was about $4.3 million. The cost to the town, our cost out of pocket, looks like it'll be just under $385,000, which is well within the, the surplus fund that's, that's in the solid waste fund. So we're in good shape on that point. And our, our claim has been filed in its entirety with FEMA, so the ball is in their court. When, when we're going to see that money, I, you know, I pull a guest out of the air, I, I don't know. But obviously, we have all our information in. If there's any questions or anything that they have throughout the process, obviously, we'll respond to them as quickly as, as we can. But the vendors that we worked with on that, from the, the, Wood O'Brien, that helped us with the accounting, helped us with the paperwork, get those things reviewed, that flowed really well with finance and with staff reviewing it. So, not that we want to go through that again anytime soon, but it was a very clean process, and so I'm very pleased to tell you that, you know, we've, we've got some final numbers, and we're just waiting for the checks to hopefully roll in soon. And other than, I have one other thing to share with you, just some good news. The old Applebee's location, if, if any of you have been by, you've seen some activity over there. We do have a new restaurant coming in over there. The Pirate Republic Seafood and Grill, which is another one in Fort Lauderdale.
Okay.
And you can make a note of this, piratrepublicbar.com, happens to be their website, if you want to get a sense of what's going over there. So it looks like a, a nice casual place. Pricing looks appropriate. It looks like, should be a good mix for our town. Obviously, much better than an empty restaurant site, and, and to give our residents another choice, another place to get going, will, will be certainly a good thing. They're not changing the, the Applebee's footprint, signage, anything else, so it should be, I know they've been in, they've met with Robert, but should be a very quick and very clean process. But, so we got something coming. So if somebody says, what's going on over there, we are getting a new restaurant.
Cool.
I want to share that with you, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Great news. Okay. I'm going to take another couple of minutes here that I forgot. Marty, I wanted to commend you on a stupendous PowerPoint presentation, short-winded, to the point, accurate, easy to understand. You knocked it out of the ballpark the other night. So I just want to make sure I, I reached out to you and let you know that that's what I thought, so.
Thank you.
Greatly appreciate it. Thanks. You want to jump in? Dee?
I did.
Go ahead. Oh, you did? Too funny. I missed that part. Okay.
The, Andy did have a, a meeting with staff after, and will be, with your recommendations, guidance, we'll, you'll see, come September 12th is the next meeting, at 6:00 PM is our first.
So those of you that missed Tuesday night, September 12th is the next public. Awesome. Okay. Number nine, Russell.
This is a resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, accepting and approving an agreement with the State of Florida Department of Environmental Protection to receive $500,000 to complete the Green Meadows drainage improvements during fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Make a motion.
To approve.
Second.
To approve.
Second.
Any public comment on this matter?
Noel Hollingworth, 190th Avenue. I'd like to thank Keith and our lobbyists, and Emily, and anyone else that had any of their fingers into it, because this is a significant amount in a legislature that did significantly nothing. So I guess we're one of the bright stars out there of the entire legislative session. And I don't know how we did it, but we did it. And I'd like to thank those that were able to do it. Thank you.
Awesome. Any additional public comment? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. Back to us. Any comments? All right, call the question.
Councilmember Schroder?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Number 10, please.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, authorizing its town attorney to commence legal, legal action against Rosenbauer America and/or its responsible related legal entity, Rosenbauer, relating to the maintenance and repair issues associated with engine 82, and providing an effective date.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Mayor, Mayor, I can just say one word about this.
Go ahead.
This is a resolution that we just want to hold in our back pocket right now. Through the notification of Rosenbauer that this item would be before you, apparently, they've been pretty responsive the last couple of weeks in fixing our problems all of a sudden, despite the numerous letters, calls, emails before. So we just want this on standby, to be able to send to their legal counsel and say, if this truck is not 100%, we're authorized to commence.
Okay.
Andy, you have anything else on that?
No, I just want to, Keith, I want to thank you for the last letter that, that was sent by your office. Seemed to have gotten their attention. They've been much more receptive and responsive, and, you know, I, I have urged the chief, And, you know, I, I have urged the chief, and I know Captain Bach is here, if you have any questions for him, but I've urged the, the chief to make sure that they, they put some hours and put some miles on that engine to thoroughly test it. And it, it's actually responded very well. But I do urge you to pass this tonight. Hopefully, it will not be necessary. But, you know, if we need to take the next step to make sure that we have their attention, this would be the way to do it. So thank you.
I thought we already had this ready to go, but whatever, whatever we need.
Mayor, we, we had asked you for a consensus to move it forward.
Right. No, we are.
But we were continuing to have problems with Rosenbauer. Since that last letter, they've been more responsive, but this, this formal action is something we would need to have.
You had the sludge hammer in the toolbox, though.
Exactly. As Keith said, we just want to have it reserved.
I'm good. Any public comment on this matter? Seeing no public comment, public comment is closed. No additional comments at the council. Call the question.
Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Number 11.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a maintenance indemnification and work agreement with John Davis and Dina J. Davis to allow a garage to be located slightly within the town's 30-foot road and drainage easement, waiving the required setback to allow the garage to be placed within the desired location, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Russell, why don't you read 12, too, because they're almost identical, and then we can discuss them all as a package.
Item 12 is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving a maintenance indemnification and work agreement with Ray Williams and Reina Williams to allow a detached garage to be located within the town's road and drainage easement, waiving the required setback to allow the garage to be placed within the desired location, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into an agreement and providing an effective date.
Mayor, as I stated previously, these two items, which could be considered quasi-judicial in nature, the applicants have waived quasi-judicial so that they did not have to be here tonight. But if anyone wanted to listen to it, quasi-judicial, we're happy to do so. But I didn't see any before, so we'll just proceed under a fairly debatable standard for these two items. As we discussed at a, a prior meeting, there were two situations where two properties bordered a, an easement, or right-of-way, depending on what the case may be. And when zoning reviewed it, it was not fully recognized that that area was not their property because it looked like a wide-open grass space abutting absolutely no one and impacting no one on that side where that property was...
It abuts Cooper City.
So as a result, zoning found that the property could be constructed with those structures, two similar situations on both of them. Structures could be permitted and built along those areas, provided that the property owner enter into an agreement with the town relating to those structures. Permits were issued. These were not unpermitted. These permits were issued. Inspections occurred. COs were issued. These buildings were built 100% to code, permitted by the town, approved by the town. So then we came to the end of, of the job, and I recognized immediately that some sort of agreement would have to be crafted with the homeowners, because technically speaking, it was not built on, in that property. It was actually built outside of the property, in the right-of-way. In John Davis's situation, it may be different. He believes that he owns the property where his structure is built. He's having a surveyor resurvey it, and we're waiting to see what occurs. So that, that resolution's drafted a little bit differently than the other one. So the, the town has an option today of one that, you know, an unfortunate option, because you don't have a lot of options that make sense. Both property owners agreed that if the town ever believed that that area where that structure was built becomes needed for a legitimate public purpose, that you all needed it, you needed to bury FPNL lines, you needed, you know, to put a utility there, you needed it for a million other reasons, that they would remove the structure at their cost, provided that the unanimous commission felt that it was necessary for a legitimate and important public purpose. So there is an agreement that's on the agenda that basically accepts the fact that this was either, A, built in the right-of-way, or built too close to the setback line, because we're not sure in Davis's case which one it is, with the caveat that the Town Council could, at a later date, require them to remove those structures if it deemed it to be necessary. If the Town Council does not approve the items tonight, I can tell you that we have some liability as a result of where the structures were built, the fact that they were built by, by permit and at a considerable expense to the applicant. I know that Councilmember Brightcruz has been very instrumental in post-review criteria, which I'll let him address, I don't need to get into that. But that's the items that are before you today for consideration.
Do you have a motion?
We need to clarify that 11.
So good.
There was one slight clarification, the John Davis resolution. A resident properly wanted a clarification on one of the warehouse clauses. I'm going to let Russell, and I accepted, absolutely supported it. So I'd like Russell just to read that one warehouse clause modification.
Just to clarify, if you wanted, if you wish to follow along, council, it's the sixth warehouse clause on the John Davis, item number 11. The, the warehouse clause will now read, "The road and drainage easement, as delineated in the attached survey, Exhibit B," which you don't have in front of you, but we have in, in-house, and we can circulate that certainly, "is maintained by Davis." And so in other words, we took out the word adjacent to the property, and we added "as delineated in the attached survey."
Just to make it certain which area we were referring to. So as long as the motion to approve for both of them was subject to that modification, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, so you got that Steve made the motion, Dee seconded it. Motion approved. Steve made the motion.
And both council members was with the modification.
For both.
Thank you.
And, I'm sorry, who made the second?
Dee.
Dee, okay, thank you.
So just, just to add a minor thing. So, you know, in this situation, there's really two things. One is rectifying the problem that we have here, and then the other one is making sure it doesn't happen again. And so when we discuss this, you know, I've, I've found in numerous situations, the best thing to do is to have a checklist of, these are the things, these are, these are the steps you have to go through, these are the things you have to look for before you take the next step. And so, so we put together with, you know, assistance from others, a checklist to, to go through, all the things to look for on a piece of property as you are going through this approval process. And this has been put together, and, you know, most of it actually put together by Keith and Andy, and I vetted it, and, and I think, I think it's a good list, and I think it's a step in the right direction to make sure that this is not repeated in the future. Thank you.
Any public comment on this matter?
Noel Hollingworth, 199th Avenue. Really, this is just a continuous thing with our building and zoning. We've got walls that are in the easement. We've got roads that have been usurped. We've got all sorts of things over the years, one after another after another, like maybe one or two a year, every year. And here we are again. And that's just me venting. It needs to be corrected. Our building and zoning departments got to get themselves shaped up, one way or the other. Anyway, the second part is, on one of the property, Mayor, do you need to reclusive yourself, because you're the next-door neighbor? Number two, number three, there is no, if it was going to be quasi-judicial, judicial, we'd have maps where it is, what it is. Instead, we have an ordinance that says, "Slightly"? I mean, what a technical term that is. Is it one feet, two feet, 10 feet? And on the other one, is it one feet, two feet, 10 feet? The word "slightly"? I mean, come on. This is ridiculous to, to have to put something forward like this. It says "slightly." I mean, there is no recourse. I said, you know, you went to court, and a judge would go, "Slightly"? What is "slightly"? Between here and the sun, between here and the moon is slightly.
I think the fact is it is or it isn't, but...
So can we get some numbers? And there would be a map of where the location is. And this is after the fact, but it was legal after the fact, we're doing this. We're playing catch-up. I hate playing catch-up. So what I'm trying to say is, someone has to take a look at building and zoning completely. Thank you.
That's, that's what Steve was referring to relating to this cut sheet.
David Kazenski, 6411 Holliday Trail. My question has to do with, since the way my understanding is that if a later council decides on a 5-0 vote, unanimous vote, that the structure somehow impinges on a use that the town deems necessary to use these easements, that the present landowner will tear down the structure at his cost. But would this same stipulation apply to a subsequent owner? That's my question. Thank you.
Run, I'm quite sure, Keith, it runs with the property.
Why don't you finish public comment?
Yeah. Any additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, public comment closed. Back to us. Dee, go ahead.
I have to agree with Noel. "Slightly" is an interpretation.
The survey is attached in this exhibit.
Okay.
It's exact.
Okay, then that's what I needed to know. As long as there's a survey. Okay.
Okay. And do you want me, go ahead, Gary.
I had a question regarding this zoning plan review sheet that we just got. Well, first off, I'm surprised we don't have that already.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's my first gut, gut-check reaction, but, and now I'm going to put on Steve's hat and play DA for a second. My turn. What happens if you get a no?
Stops the project.
Yeah, I mean, you know...
Within the zoning, within the zoning review...
What happens if it's a no? Does it still go forward?
No, it stops the project dead.
Stops.
So you make it a yes.
Well, so it's an exception, right? So if you get a no, it's an exception. And what that means is, the process stops, and there's a discussion and, and, you know, a decision, whether, whether it just stops in its tracks, or whether there's an option, you know, to remedy the situation.
Well, yeah, but I'm looking at, are they constructing a guest house with a separate meter? I mean, that could be just a matter of convenience.
No, it's not...
Or not enough power in the original...
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying. At that point...
And let's say they say no, but, you know, then where does it go from there? I guess that's my question.
What, what, the, the, what the idea of this checklist is not, is not to stop the process, it's to make sure that every piece, every, every step of the process is covered. And, and for those things, and nothing slips through. So if something comes up that, that does not meet the standard of what it should meet, it, it needs to be brought up to code. It needs to, it needs to be done right. If there's a situation where it, it, there's, there's some, it could be interpreted either way, then there needs to be a discussion and a decision, a ministerial decision, whether or not this actually does meet, is, is proper or is improper.
Yeah, well, what I'm, the question I'm raising is, if it's a no, can it go, can it still go forward?
It depends.
You know.
The, the definitive answer is, it depends.
Okay.
The, the, I just want to add something for the question. We added, and Councilmember Brightcruz modified, the, the bottom line in the, in the checklist, and that says in red, "If the answer to any of the above questions are contrary to code, reviewer must not approve the permit prior to receiving written approval by the town administrator and town attorney." So there are possibilities. We had one the other day. I want to, just because you brought it up, I'll bring up a real-life situation that just occurred. A property owner had a separate meter on their guest house, which violates town code. Okay, you're not allowed a separate meter on your guest house. And the reason is, is because the comp plan board back in 2000 felt that if you had a separate meter, you could rent out your guest house separately, and as a result, our code prohibits secondary meters. This secondary meter was installed in 1972.
That's only on a guest house, though, not another building on the property, correct?
I, I don't want to answer that. I don't remember.
Well, I'm asking you.
Robert, do you remember?
1972, it doesn't matter.
It's any separate building, Robert, say.
Any separate building.
But, so that was a situation where, where Robert checked off, "Whoa, it has a separate meter." And we actually had to speak to the property owner at length, who was an attorney, and they proved to us that, that FPNL approved it in 19, I think it was 1972, and when it was built. And as a result, I had to send them an email, copying Andy on it, saying that I find this to be one of the rare exceptions, because the, it's vested based upon when it was installed.
Yeah, and I think that's the way it should be handled, so that nothing slips through that's not dug into and vetted out. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
By the way, I didn't mean to open up a can of orange, I just happened to look down, and I picked that one.
Yeah.
It was just purely a random pick, you know. And I, and, and the, the part in red needs to be in larger print for me.
Okay.
Or red by younger eyes than ours.
Ooh.
Then ours, I said ours.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Unless you had cataract surgery. All right. We call the question. Any additional comments? We're good?
Call the question. Councilmember Schroeder?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Fitz Kelly?
Yes.